Thank you all for being here today and for those who are watching us on Facebook or other grassroots TV channels. Today is June 10th. This is the City of Aspen regular meeting. It was certainly a beautiful summer weekend this weekend, finally away from that half-winter, half-spring weather. Will you call the roll, please? Nicole?
Counselor Benedetti.
Here.
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
Counselor Guth.
Here.
Counselor Rose.
Here.
Mayor Richards.
Here, thank you. We are going to go straight on to, I'm sorry, I have two special items. To schedule public appearances, I have two agendas for some reason on my calendar today. And Bill Sterling, why don't you come on up and make your comments first before we go into public comment?
Hello, everybody.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for putting this on the agenda tonight. This goes back a long way to 1949 in Aspen when Albert Schweitzer came to Aspen and on the 200th anniversary of the German scientist and poet Goethe. And he was invited by Elizabeth Papke, who actually went to Laberain Gabon where he was a physician and had been serving people who were sick there for generations, actually. I mean, not only was he a theologian and a humanitarian, but he was also a physician. And how he's best known and how he had the influence on us was, I think, as a humanitarian. And I would say he maybe was one of the early environmentalists. And it's too bad he's not around today to kind of invoke all of us, but shall I just read the proclamation?
Yes, this is a proclamation of the Aspen City Council, but with Mayor Sterling being one of the organizers for the event coming up in July, I thought it'd be appropriate for him to read the proclamation for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Whereas Dr. Albert Schweitzer was a revered philosopher, theologian, musician, musicologist, author, and humanist of the 20th century, and at age 30 determined to serve humanity by becoming a medical doctor. And whereas shortly before World War I, by the way, he was born in 1875 and lived until 1965, 90 years. And so he went to serve in Laberain, West Africa, French Equatorial Africa, it's actually called Gabon today. Through decades of service to his West African clinics, he became recognized as the most famous and accomplished humanist of his day. Whereas his prodigious mustache, his simple white clothing, and shock of unruly white hair became universally recognized and associated with his stature as a moral and ethical compass for people across the globe. In his lifetime, Albert Schweitzer was lauded as a living saint. He had struggles with his so-called Christianity, among other challenges in his life philosophically. But he was a theologian, and so his speech regarding his inquiries into philosophy, the speech he gave in 1949, and the world of ideas at the Goethe Bicentennial inspired public demand for a repeat festival each summer season, spawning the creation of the Aspen Institute for Humanistic Studies and the Aspen Music Festival in school, which in turn inspired the IDCA, the International Design Conference, which is no more, but flourished here for almost 35, 40 years. The Aspen Photographic Festival, which happened in 1951 but didn't continue, and many more volunteer-run nonprofit events and festivals, which made up the heart of our Aspen community to this day. Whereas Albert Schweitzer brought to Aspen and the world a high moral ethic with his promotion of a reverence for life. His persona and auspicious visit to Aspen has long inspired generations of Aspen and roaring Fork Valley residents and visitors to embrace the spirit of service, giving, and volunteerism. He is being honored on July 1st in Aspen for demonstrating and leading the way to the higher callings of service to others with charity, compassion, and empathy. Whereas all Aspenites are invited to celebrate the 150th anniversary of Albert Schweitzer's birth and the 75th anniversary of the formation of the Aspen Institute, which was called at that time for Humanistic Studies on July 1st, 2025. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor, the city council, and all the residents of Aspen do hereby declare July 1st as Albert Schweitzer Day of Service. So that's the proclamation. You have it in your packets. I just would say that...
Tell us about some of the events that day.
Well, on July 1st, there's really three specific sponsors besides all of us citizens, but the Aspen Historical Society, the Aspen City Council, if you all pass this proclamation today, and the B O C C, the Board of County Commissioners, it's already passed it. The first event will probably be around 4 o'clock at the Aspen Historic Society. And that'll just be an open house, a barbecue of some kind. I think they'll have flesh, but of course there'll be tofu there for all of those who are smart and would like to have that. Next, there'll be at 6 o'clock, an organ concert at the community church. He was one of the renowned organists in the world, and his favorite composer was Bach. And so he was a specialist in Bach. But he had an organ in Gabon, and this was in the jungle. Just think about this, the mid-20th century, and a tiny community in a remote area where they just needed medical help. And really Elizabeth Papke is the one who I would say was responsible. She went to Laberain and met him and told him that she heard he was coming to America and that she wanted him to come and visit and speak at Aspen. This is 1949, on the 200th anniversary of Goethe's life. So he came without a whole lot of people knowing he was coming. It was his only visit ever to America. And he was told that this place, Aspen, was just a suburb of Chicago. So he got on the train, and two days later he landed in Glenwood Springs and was met and picked up and brought to Aspen. And I can't remember who translated when he gave his talk, but the Aspen idea, which we all talk about, I mean, what sets Aspen apart in so many ways is some of the western towns call themselves the best of the West or the greatest in the Rockies. But our moniker is the Aspen idea, the mind, the body, and the spirit. And I'd say both the mind and the spirit were really convinced by Albert Schweitzer. And I think it's made a difference for us in all the things that we do here. Well, I've been hiking today, so I'm sort of the symbol of the body part of the Aspen idea today, I'll say. So at any rate, so we'd like to, and then there's going to be a talk in the evening, and we're still locating the location of where that's going to be because the Aspen Institute's in full swing and it's been hard to find a spot, but we've got two or three options and we'll let you know about that. But we'd be grateful, the committee was really formed with just some local people. Greg Pochman has put a lot of time and effort into this, and I want to acknowledge that, who is the current chair of the Board of County Commissioners. And other people from the Aspen Historical Society have been tremendously helpful with this. So we would love if you all would pass this proclamation this evening, and then we can publish it in the public records and go forward with this. And we would love for all of you to come to the events that afternoon. And maybe we can make this a regular annual affair of some kind. Very little has been done. When the Aspen Institute dropped the word, "The Aspen Institute for Humanistic Studies", it was very controversial because they felt they needed more leeway and not be so tied to sort of one philosophical concept, I think. But I've always regretted that that was dropped, frankly, but that was my own take on it.
Okay. Well, let's see, is there a council member who would like to make a motion to pass the Albert Schweitzer proclamation?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Nicole, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benedetti.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Mayor Richards.
Yes.
All right.
Very good. Bill, it will be in the record, and we hope to see a lot of attendance at the event.
Well, I hope all of you all will come. And those of you who are here today, please plan for this. The exact times and stuff will be published so you can come. But we have a tremendous debt that we owe to this amazing, amazing person. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much. We will now move to citizen comments and petitions. This is a time for citizens to address the council for approximately three minutes, but for items that are not on the agenda. I have a sense that there's a number of people here to talk about one of our action items, which is later in the meeting, which is the mobile home park preservation deed restriction purchase. So we will be discussing that later, but this is open comments for items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone to address, council? Please come forward and give us your name.
Mayor Richards, members of city council. I'm glad to be here. I'm Francis Stuckins. I have issues, issues, issues. Today is June 10th. Issues, Aspen County Housing Authority, they're doing a wonderful job trying to get people housed so we lose some of this commute into town, which would be great for, you know, environmental reasons, safety reasons, and hopefully loosening up the traffic jam that we have every morning. I commend the R A F T A No Fair Pilot Program that might get some people out of their cars. I live at Country Inn, and it's a dangerous cross in the street, but I've got a little private bridge over Maroon Creek that I can ride my bicycle on and go down, and pretty convenient, but it's hard to cross the street there. And we've had somebody get hit that lives in my building, which was tragic. So I'm hoping that that traffic jam gets alleviated or worked on. You know, we have a bridge problem, Castle Creek Bridge. I don't know how we can widen the road or eliminate the S-curves, but the entrance to Aspen is a huge issue, and I think we're all working on trying to be able to get that relieved. Thank you for proclaiming not only July 7th, Mayor Sterling, Mayor Torrey is here too, as you are. And Arbor Day, June 7th, was wonderful. It was also the same day that we had the Andy Zenka Youth Empowerment Program 25th Anniversary going on at the radio station. I'm a DJ at K D N K. Moving on, because I only have three minutes, and I will go on forever. Sustainable packaging at City Market, this is an environmental issue along with the traffic and the air pollution that we're trying to take care of. You know, I bought a rotisserie chicken the other day, and if I kept it in the bag and put it in the compost, it would not break down. So they're not complying to any kind of sustainable packaging. Also, the beer and wine sales are all over the store when I believe that there's a law that says, state of Colorado, that if you're going to sell beer and wine at a supermarket, you can't have end caps and separate sections. They're reducing the amount of food that's on the shelves to accommodate beer and wine sales. They're hurting, I work at Carl's Wine Cellar, and they're hurting our four independent liquor stores here where we don't sell food, except for candy and stuff like that. We need to take a look at that and address it because if one Kroger doesn't have beer and wine sales, that'd be awesome for the rest of the town. Environmental issues.
You have about 15 seconds.
Okay, yeah. So I'd like to say one thing. I was angry as hell, and I didn't want to take it anymore about the newspaper article in Aspen Times that said we all turned out. All I did was take notes. Public commentary was over, and 17 people did not make public commentary last May 27th. So I apologize for calling the Aspen Times a sold-out fish wrapper. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Francis. And we will look into what the state laws are regarding end caps at the grocery store. I do know they're doing a lot of remodeling right now, and so things seem to be a little bit up everywhere, but hopefully they have that finished before it gets too crushed with business for the summer. Is there additional public comment this evening?
Yes.
Yes, please, come forward.
Mr. Darcy, Red Mountain Road.
Okay.
I've written to yourself, good afternoon, everybody, or good evening. Yogi's next door. We were promised to build a restaurant almost, what, five years ago? And in Mayor Torrey's time, we were promised a new restaurant, and we have a new restaurant, and now it's closed down. Many good people applied for tender for that building, and I believe it's like a slap in the face to us. And I think either his lease should be terminated as fast as possible, and then somebody should be picked to get back into it ASAP. I don't know how this happened, and it's very disturbing to see this has happened, for me, anyway, as a businessperson who wanted to try and open it up. I had a concept that would have worked, but again, somebody beat me to it. And then we had Bruno Leskies applied for it. We had many people who applied for it, for tender for the building. So the question is, what happens between now and September Labor Day?
I appreciate your comments. I think those concerns are shared across the community and certainly at this council table, but we are in, we're out of legal proceedings right now. They have caught up on their rent, and we are paying attention to that and the lease and the lease provisions and what we can do about it, but I really can't go any further than that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. Additional public comment? Tony?
Hi, good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Toni Kronberg, and this will probably be the shortest comments I've ever made in my 50 years of coming before Aspen City Council. I wanted to comment that Christine Benedetti last night brought up a really good question about how many people, workers, are going to be going to the lumberyard housing project at the same time. And the answer that we received, which is kind of shocking, was that the three buildings that are going to be built are as long as a city block, just about as long as a city block. And each building's going to require 150 just construction workers, and the project's going to be put together at the same time, built simultaneously. So my suggestion would be, we need 11 R A F T A buses that can pick these workers up down at Brush Creek Park and Ride and then transport them to the construction site. The second question that I have is Christine also brought up the fact that the airport layout plant is going to be being developed at the same time, and I have not seen any communication yet between the Picken County Commissioners and the city council about having a construction management plan for that whole area. Then the third thing and the last thing is I've just given to you the referendum to ballot question that voters just approved. There's a lot of confusion at almost every single meeting that I've gone to as to what this ballot question really approved. And this is word for word. And what I've highlighted is that, well, it says voter approval of the measure allows the Colorado Department of Transportation to proceed with both the planning and construction of Highway 82 alignment. And then the part that I have highlighted, it says, "Under the current or any future record of decision resulting from environmental impact study." And a lot of people, the meetings I've been to, all different kinds, they think that this question endorses the preferred alternative, and it does not. What it endorses is either the reevaluation or a new E I S. So we have a clean, open slate, so I just wanted to bring that forward because I just, my hope is that we're all on the same page, we all have the same understanding that this ballot question did not specifically endorse the preferred alternative. What it endorsed was the current or any future record of decision resulting from environmental impact study that brings forward a preferred alternative.
Thank you, Toni.
Thank you so much, Rachel.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment? There being none, I will close the public comments section, and we will move on to special orders of the day, council members and mayor comments, agenda amendments, city manager comments, and board reports. Do we have any agenda amendments, Pete? No, no, we don't. Okay. Council member and mayor's comments? No, for you, Bill?
No.
Sam? John?
Yeah, I'd also like to mention another Aspen Historical Society event coming up this Friday. It's the Holden Marault Hold Down. It's at the Holden Marault Museum out at the entrance to Aspen, actually. And it's this Friday, like I said, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. There's free admission, food, drinks, and dessert available for purchase. There also will be live music and games for the kids.
Great.
Hope to see you all there. It's a great community event for the start of the summer. Thanks.
Yes, very much so. Thank you, John. Christine?
One quick one as part of our information update today, but applications for Aspen 360 are open. It's the sort of intro to civic government, your local civic government here. I did it last fall, the seven-week program, and I learned an enormous amount. So anyone who wants to peek under the hood of your local government, I encourage you to apply and hopefully get admitted.
So those applications are on the website for the City of Aspen?
Yes.
I believe they are. I do not know specifics.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that forward, Christine. I would just like to mention a couple of things briefly. There was the pickleball court opening this past Saturday up at Island Park, and there are seven brand-new pickleball courts and one tennis court remaining up there. We have the other tennis courts down at Truscott. And it was in full swing and in full use, and I think people were really having a great time. And so I just really wanted to thank the Parks and Recreation Department for that innovation, having that project ready for summertime. I spoke with one fellow who said, you know, when I was younger, I used to play tennis, but now I really can't run all over the court as big and as much as I used to, but pickleball has become their new favorite sport. So that was a really great event from our Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you. We did have a wonderful Arbor Day foundation as well on Saturday. I think we're getting to the season when there's too many different things to do on the same day, no matter how you try to schedule it. And it is that summer in Aspen. There's a lot of citizens who came to get trees, but I particularly wanted to thank all the various city departments that were there. The police department was there to offer bike safety and bells and information. People were there about composting and how to take care of your table scraps, environmental health. Just every department we had showed up with signing colors, as well as other departments as well. So we're celebrating our many, many years as a Tree City USA and greatly appreciate what it does to keep our community a little cool and retain soils and all sorts of other good stuff. I will say that I heard a side comment from someone who said, "We're not just a Tree City USA, we're a Fuel City USA." And so that kind of brings us back to the fact that we may very well be having a drought summer this summer. And having met, and I'll discuss that in a minute, with the Board of County Commissioners about emergency safety and plans for wildfire, to make sure you have your go-bag and make sure you and your family have a plan of where you're going to meet. Your children might be in someplace different from you. They might not be leaving from you at the house. They might be with other friends. How will you get back in touch after you've evacuated from town? Do you have all your medications packed and ready to be able to go and important vital papers? So we're certainly all hoping that's nothing any of us will have to confront, and so I would ask everyone to keep their barbecue pits safe, make sure you dispose of any charcoal safely, and keep an eye out for anyone who is not paying attention to the chain dragging from the car and sending sparks into the brush. So that's very, very important. And with that, I will move on to the next part of the agenda. Thank you. We now have board reports or city manager comments. Do you want to go first, Pete?
Yeah, just real quickly, I wanted to mention that the city has found a way to partner on some of the shortcomings up at the federal site for moonbells.
Okay.
And the Parks Fund has found resources for about $54,000 to support four individuals from the Rocky Mountain Youth Corps to help staff up there for the second half of the summer. I think R A F T A has picked up the first half of the summer as another partner. So that means helping out at the wellness, or excuse me, the welcome center, managing some of the foot traffic, the bicycles, the vehicles, and getting that all squared away, monitoring the trails and some of the recreational sites, cleaning up things of that nature. So just kudos to the Parks Department for finding resources to be able to help in that way.
Thank you, Pete. I appreciate that, and appreciate the Parks Department for working on that. We have all seen some very severe cutbacks proposed in the federal government's budget for this coming year, as well as firings and offers for buyouts of early retirement of a great many of the personnel we've long depended upon for managing our public lands surrounding us, our national forests. And we're going to do what we can to step And we're going to do what we can to step forward. But I do not think in the long term, local governments can really carry the load for everything that that federal government is kind of cutting back and asking local communities to do. But we are doing what we can and really appreciate your work and the work of the Parks Department. Now we would move on to board reports. Do we have any board reports coming up?
Yeah.
Sam?
From NORDA Council on May 28th, we discussed a potentially new management plan. As the last one is over 10 years old. The primary discussion was climate resilience, seeing what to do about that. Options were prioritizing north-facing and shady areas, making snow. And also, the main point of the meeting I took away was triaging so that the high priority areas get more attention rather than connectors, but really only in low-snow years. We have a finite money and resources, so what to maximize the best experience for users.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Christine?
Yes. I went to my first Northwest Council of Governments meeting on Thursday, June 5th. One takeaway from it, one of the representatives there had attended a smart cities conference and talked about city-free, city-wide free Wi-Fi that's available in other mountain communities and offers landing pages for visitors when they log on that sort of gives them an intro to the city and helps them with ideas on where they're trying to go, from trails to restaurants, et cetera. I thought that was interesting because I don't think we have anything like that here, and it might be something to consider.
Thank you for that. And actually, I ran into someone from Northwest Council of Governments at the opening of the Harvest for Hunger Food Bank earlier this week. And they mentioned that they saw Aspen there and you, and they were very happy to meet you and to have our participation. So thank you for that. John, do you have anything?
No board reports.
Okay, thank you so much. The only thing I would like to touch on briefly again is that it would be replaying on Grassroots TV for anyone who'd like to watch. We had a really good meeting with our county commissioner counterparts across the way, in particularly talking about wildfire evacuation and preparedness. And it was really nice to meet the county emergency manager, representative from the local fire district, and others who are involved in keeping the public safe. And so again, they're really stressing that we come up with a personal action plan for everybody's family, have your go-bags, and start thinking about, can you help a neighbor out as well who may have a trouble evacuating on their own? So that was a really good meeting. We all have to be alert. We all have to pay attention, and we have to cross our fingers for the best. You will note later in our agenda, under the consent calendar, we do have a stage-one water restrictions ordinance moving forward, or not ordinance, but implementation of our existing plans. I had a long time ago met the state meteorologist, and he would always tell me that 75% of the precipitation that we receive in Colorado evaporates. And so while you may think we've had a little bit of rainy time, it is gone in a flash with the temperatures that we have and the solar radiation at this elevation. So everyone, keep your eyes open and keep yourselves and your neighbors safe. Then the last thing I wanted to mention, probably could have mentioned it earlier, but you will see the new street art in the downtown on some of the key corners of the busy intersections, South Galena Street corridor between Hopkins and Cooper and near the Wheeler Opera House. Our artist was Anthony Garcia, Sr. And I've met him at the kind of opening they have for that on Thursday and saw him during the farmer's market, which was very well-attended for the first farmer's market of the season. And the children had a chance to draw what they would like to see on street art and gave away some nice pencils, and it was just really a great event. Our goal is to see traffic slow down in the core, where there's a lot of pedestrian movement, and to bring a little more color and life to our streets. So that worked out really well. And in passing, I'd just like to thank the Commercial Corps and Lodging Commission for their efforts to see a very successful farmer's market. The diversity of booths there this time was really wonderful. There was a lot of excitement, a lot of interest, and a really good layout. So I think our citizen volunteers are very important to us and the work that they do and did a great job with the farmer's market. That's one of their primary responsibilities. So that's it for board reports. We will now move on to the consent calendar. I will read the titles of all the items, and then if there's any that would like to be pulled, you can let me know. Or if we have further questions that we could have answered without actually pulling them from the vote. We have Resolution Number 78, Series of 2025, As-Needed Radio Telemetry Software and Electronic Service Contract Approval. Resolution Number 79, Series of 2025, Design Workshop Change of Order for Connor Park. Resolution Number 81, Series of 2025, The Stage-One Water Shortage Resolution. We have Resolution Number 83, Series of 2025, Intergovernmental Agreement with Colorado Mountain College to Maintain Our Childcare Center There for Another Three Years, or Our Shared Childcare Center. Resolution Number 84, Series of 2025, An Amendment to the Ajax Cubs Lease That Is Allowing Them to Expand Into a Space Being Vacated at the Yellow Brick Childcare Center in Early Childhood Education. Resolution Number 87, Series of 2025, A Waiver of Employment Restrictions for Former Mayor Torrey. This Would Allow Him to Work in the Sound and Video Section AV of the Wheeler Opera House and the Draft Minutes from Our May 27th Meeting. That is all the consent calendar items. Is there anyone who would like to pull anything, or is there a motion to approve? John?
I was just hoping to pull Resolution 81 because, and get a report from Steve Hunter about what's going on with water right now. I think that'd be great for the public to understand it.
Okay, well, let's not pull it. Let's just have Steve Hunter come up. And is he here to? Come on up, Steve. Why don't you talk about what we're concerned with, with our water resolutions?
Thanks.
Thank you. Very good. I appreciate that. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Thanks. Steve Hunter, Utilities Resource Manager for the city of Aspen. Drought, like John mentioned, just wanted to touch on it. So you all have seen the memo. We've been out of drought for about two years, which has been pretty great. But now we're back in a familiar territory. Currently, Picken County is sitting in, according to the U.S. Drought Monitor, which is one of about 15 metrics that we use to determine where we kind of fall in the drought regime on a given year. But currently, according to them, we're at 82% of the county. Picken County is in severe drought, D2, with the remaining 15% in moderate and a little sliver of extreme in western Picken County. Pretty reminiscent of what's happening in southwest U.S. right now. Severe drought, extreme drought. The big reservoirs are still empty. We did have a nice little reprieve with some cool temps. And had people ask me, oh, is this the beginning of the monsoons? It's not. It was remnants from Tropical Storm Alvin that we had, that great precip, a couple of weeks ago. All the rivers are down, pretty low for this time of year for most of the, I mean, you could wade across the Roaring Fork Mid Valley right now, which is pretty unbelievable. Our local reservoirs that we get power from, Rudi and Ridgeway, are expected to fill. So that's a good thing locally. The Roaring Fork at Glenwood Springs is expected to be at 60% of average for runoff this year, so significantly lower than last year. I have a bunch of statistics. I guess the last thing I'll end on. We did get the snowtail finally, after four years, installed up in Castle Creek Basin. So it's up on Pearl Pass Road, first successful year of operation. We also do the ASO flights, third year. And this year, we flew, so real quick, we do two flights, one about peak, snowwater equivalent, or SWE, and then one that's when the snowpack becomes isothermic, where it's truly melting out. So those dates are generally around April 9th, April 12th, and then later in May for the second flight. So last year, between the first flight and the second flight, and I'm just going to speak for Castle because that's primarily where the city of Aspen water comes from. Between those two flights, the snowpack had melted approximately 14%. Those same flights, relative same dates of flights this year, the snowpack melted almost 45%. So almost half of that snowpack left. We do have snowpack up high still, which has kind of been a saving grace. Snowtails are all melted out. Outlooks, I guess, temperature, 60, 70% probability for the next three months, June, July, August, of higher temperatures. The good news is, if there's a silver lining in this, is that the climatologists are predicting a wetter-than-average North American monsoon, generally starts from mid-July for us. So that's why we're recommending a stage-one, not a stage-two, to kind of get our feet on the ground here. So they are calling for equal chances of precipitation. And two or three months ago, that was not the case. So that's something we're going to monitor, and hopefully we'll get some precip out of the North American monsoon.
And what does the stage-one watering restrictions require our residents to do?
It's actually voluntary, stage-one, for our residents. It recommends, we try to attain a 10% reduction in water use. It's mandatory for all government buildings for city of Aspen. So we kind of get our own ducks in a row, so to speak. And also, when we start with stage-one, I think it gives us great opportunity for messaging to the public instead of just hitting them straight away with stage-two. It does recommend a watering schedule based upon your address. If it's even, and I don't have it right in front, I do have it somewhere, even every other day. And then odd is every day, other day. So odd, I think, is Monday, Wednesday.
Friday.
Friday. And then even is the other days there. We try to have people, and this is also what we're trying to do in a valley-wide collaboration with all the municipalities from here to Glenwood, so people are getting somewhat consistent messaging, would be to not water between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m.
Well, that reduces a little of that evaporation I was talking about. And I think this is very important, that we all kind of turn on the tap when we're doing our dishes or washing something off, and we don't really think about where our water comes from. But the city of Aspen only has a surface-water type of program with very limited storage right before treatment. It can be a three-to-five-day supply. We are not fed by a reservoir like other communities may be, who are below Rudi or in other communities. So it's very important that we truly husband our supplies through the season and hope for that rain. Thank you. Any other questions on that or from other members?
Thanks for the thorough report. Really appreciate it.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Would you call the roll, please, Nicole?
Counselor Benedetti.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Mayor Richards.
Yes. Thank you very much. The consent calendar has passed, and we will move into, we have no notice of call-ups. We have no first reading of ordinances. We will do a public hearing on the City of Aspen Clean Air Act. And then after that will be our action item discussing the mobile home park preservation deed restriction purchase. Thank you all for being here today. Please, proceed.
Good evening, Mayor Richards and City Council. My name is Natalie Sevdos, and I'm the Air Quality Program Manager for the city of Aspen. Tonight, I'm here for the second reading of the proposed updates to the City of Aspen Clean Air Act, which is our non-smoking ordinance. The purpose of the City of Aspen Clean Air Act is to protect the public from exposure to secondhand smoke and secondhand vapor. The City of Aspen Clean Air Act was first passed in 1985, and Aspen was one of the first municipalities in the state to pass an ordinance regulating smoking. So at that time, this was a very unique thing. Since then, the state has passed their version of a Clean Air Act in 2006, and they updated that again in 2019. The biggest update in 2019 was the addition of prohibiting vaping anywhere that smoking is allowed. And so where we are today in 2025 is that our local ordinance is pretty much superseded by the state act, since we can't be less strict. And so that has led, sometimes led to some confusion when we're explaining the rules around smoking and vaping to the public or to businesses. And so a solution we're proposing is to update our city Clean Air Act to align with the state and just modernize our ordinance. So another reason this is really important, to protect the public from that exposure to secondhand smoke and vapor, is that the vapor that e-cigarettes emit is not just harmless water vapor. There are harmful chemicals and things like nicotine, VOCs, heavy metals, things that are known to cause cancer and other diseases. So it's not just a harmless water vapor that is being emitted. And those chemicals can, you know, affect people that are standing close by to that, and it can cause different conditions and health effects, like lung damage, cardiovascular disease. And since vaping is a relatively new thing, there's also the potential that there's some health effects that are long-term that we don't know about yet. The biggest change from our existing ordinance and what we're proposing, again, is that our existing ordinance doesn't address vaping at all. So the proposed language would include prohibiting vaping anywhere that smoking is prohibited, and that is in indoor public spaces and certain outdoor public spaces. That language will align with the state act, which also prohibits vaping anywhere that smoking is prohibited. And another thing that the state act does is that it allows local municipalities to be more strict. And so that's something that the city has historically done in regulating certain outdoor spaces. The biggest changes, again, are going to be adding a definition of electronic smoking device and updating our language to align with the state. Another change will be that smoking and vaping won't be allowed in outdoor public places when they're being used for a special event that a member of the public can go to. And businesses won't be required to post signage at all of their public entrances with the non-smoking symbol. So what this kind of looks like for the public, the specific areas I want to go over that this will affect. So it affects places of employment. So this is not just to protect the public, but it's also protect people while they're working, so they have a safe workplace. It doesn't matter if it's open to the public at that time. So it's just anytime somebody is in their workplace, there would be no smoking and vaping. Indoor public places, which are going to be things like restaurants, bars, shops, anywhere that a member of the public can enter, regardless of whether there is a fee. So this includes auditoriums and theaters, things that people might be paying a fee to enter. This would still apply. Public events, so both indoor and outdoor public events that are, again, open to anybody. Outdoor service areas and dining areas. A service area, an example of that would be if somebody is waiting in line to receive a service, that would, they would not be allowed to smoke there. So, you know, waiting in line at the kiosk to receive information downtown, that would be a non-smoking area, as well as outdoor dining areas, designated outdoor city property, which is currently the city-county campus out here and the bridge between the high school and the recreation center, and then within 25 feet of public entrances. The benefits of updating our ordinance is that this would provide some clarity on the rules. There would be less confusion. We wouldn't be looking at the state act for certain things and our local ordinance for other things. It would remove some antiquated regulations from our ordinance that we can't enforce, since we can't be less strict than the state. And then updating our local ordinance also would allow us, Aspen, to customize our regulations and make future changes as council sees fit. So with that, I will open it up to questions.
Council members, do you have any questions before we have public comment? Nope. Is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment on this, public hearing on this ordinance? And we have anyone online? No. Thank you. I will close the public hearing, and I would like to accept a motion to approve ordinance number four, Series of 2025, the City of Aspen Clean Air Act, second reading.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Nicole, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benedetti.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Mayor Richards.
Yes. Thank you very much. We really appreciate you keeping us all safe and healthy. Yes. Thank you very much. We really appreciate you keeping us all safe and healthy.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move up to an action item. This is a resolution, series of eighty-six, series of 2025, the mobile home park preservation deed restriction purchase. And we have Diane Foster here to present for us. Let's see where, let me get my screen up here. One second while we get our computers to sync.
And may I share my screen, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Great. Any luck, that will switch to, all right, let me stop sharing and get the right one up. Oh, there we go. Okay, we got it. I've got about six slides and can go through this fairly rapidly if you'd like.
Take your time.
Okay. So, Mayor, we're here today to talk about two mobile home parks. I actually learned a term today, naturally occurring affordable housing. This is housing where, because of the housing type, history, market conditions, et cetera, it is, it is a form of affordable housing, but is probably some of the largest at-risk affordable housing. These two mobile home parks are owned by one developer, and that developer, on April 9th, accepted an offer on those two parks, Mountain Valley and Aspen Basalt. The map in the background shows their location. Mountain Valley is located just outside of Carbondale and unincorporated Garfield County, at the intersection of 133 and 82. And Aspen Basalt is located just below Willets, right off of 82. The total is 139 parks, and I'll generally talk about both of these, but if you have questions, we can split these apart. Majority of the folks who live in these parks are employed, more than 50% are employed in Aspen. There was a third-party offer accepted. Colorado state law is quite advanced as compared to some other states, and does provide the residents an opportunity to submit a competitive offer within 120 days of that initial offer, and that date is August 9. And the acquisition cost is 46.57 million, and that does include some engineering and a fund for capital reserves. And the request that this group is seeking to gather from public, private sources, et cetera, anywhere possible, a $20 million subsidy to make it affordable. I'll go into just a little bit more detail. The questions that I'll be asking you at the end of this is, are you interested in providing any financial support? That would take the form of a deed restriction on the property, so you would, you could actually buy an interest along with other local governments. And if so, if you do want to participate, at what level? Thistle, there are two nonprofits, Thistle and West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition, who've been very involved in this. And there are also one or two other local nonprofits also involved. These are the primary ones that city staff has been working with. Pete and I have been working on this one directly, as well as Liz Exberg. Thistle exists primarily, they do, they're an affordable housing group. They spend a lot of time saving mobile home parks. And specifically, the term ROK is resident-owned community. That's an important term as we move forward. So Thistle has been working with the residents. Both of these mobile home park residents have voted to become a resident-owned community. They have lined up the financing and have done all the pro forma work to define what kind of subsidy is needed. West Mountain Regional, very much local coordination. And even at a $20 million subsidy, there will still be lot, rent increases that I'll just put forward. Thistle provided this slide. This shows you the average rents, right? The rents are different. There are a range of rents from $1,000 to $1,500, depending on the lot. Thistle does encourage a flat, a flat fee. And these, because these properties are in different locations and have a different specific cost to them, that's why they're showing these subsidy rates. However, as Thistle is looking to make this equitable across the two parks. Next up is just a brief, so you've, on the top row are folks who have at least talked about this publicly. So Atlantic Aviation publicly came out, you saw in the newspaper, with an offer for $1 million. Town of Basalt is, is in for $250,000 plus. They are also providing, they let us know yesterday, they got a $60,000 grant from DOLA to, and they are pitching another 15, to fund West Mountain Regional's work on this. Town of Carbondale has discussed this publicly. They have not yet put a number on it specifically, and tonight you're, you all are talking about this. Pittkin County will be discussing this tomorrow in open session. Eagle County, Town of Snowmass Village in the next week are having that discussion as well. Glenwood Springs has, is likely to put in a nominal amount. They just committed to $1.5 million support of Three Mile Mobile Home Park. So they're, they believe that their ability to contribute is, is a little bit more limited. And Garfield County is going to be talking about this. And so that'll be interesting as well. There are also a number of conversations happening with other private sector organizations. And of course, as represented on the right, this is a picture of the folks from one of the, one of the parks. The groups are very engaged and very well organized. They are also doing fundraising, in addition to the folks listed here. And last up, as a reminder, I know I don't need to remind you about this, but the, while the City of Aspen has, has a real estate transfer tax that funds affordable housing, you have a number of significant asks on the table from what you discussed last night, the lumberyard. I got a call from Gail Schwartz today asking about, and she'll be reaching out to you on habitats requests. We've got a work session coming up next week on incentivized rightsizing, moving assistance. APSHA this week is talking about the expanded essential repairs grant program. West Mountain Regional Housing is coming back on next Monday as well. We're just having a check-in with you on, do you want to contribute to that? Forest service is still on the menu, and there are a number of other affordable housing tactics in the Affordable Housing Strategic Plan that also are demanding of your resources. So that's the extent of my presentation tonight.
Thank you, Diane. I appreciate that. I did get a call from Kelly McNichols-Curry this afternoon. I spoke with her and asked if it would be all right to present this publicly, and she said that they had had an executive session to discuss this, and they had given direction to their staff to prepare a resolution to pass formally at the meeting tomorrow, to be able to contribute $3 million to this project. And so I think that that really speaks highly of our county commissioner colleagues, now that they actually have a funding source and a revenue, trying to make good use of it. I'll just say a few words and then turn it over to the board for discussion. I have been here a long time, I think people know, 1978. And so I've seen projects such as the Woody Creek Mobile Home Park, where that was threatened with a sale when the owner was tired of it. And at that point in time, the city actually loaned the money to Pittkin County to be able to purchase it and go through the process of subdividing those to ownership lots as opposed to space rental slots. The county commissioners worked vigorously when Aspen Village was coming up for sale as a land use proposal, a lot of property there, and they were able to preserve that. Again, we're all familiar with friends and neighbors who live in Smuggler Mobile Home Park, that we have a, a history of preserving the housing that exists. And I was on the county commissioner board when we made the decision to purchase Phillips Curve Mobile Home Park, because it was going to simply end up being three large monster homes, as the family heir had died and the siblings wanted to cash out the value of their inheritance. But we were able to preserve that. We are constantly in a battle for affordable housing. And for me, at least, it's important to preserve what we have as much as always seeking to build more. So I personally would love to see us come close to or match the Pittkin County commissioners in our contribution to this. It is something that, if for any reason this property is not able to close, they're not able to continue to raise the most, it's that they need. This is, it's no money at risk. But it is a sign of good faith, and I think can help spur the efforts forward. So those are my major comments. And I guess the other last thing I would say is that, thank heavens, we have a real estate transfer tax. And that is something that we have that will help us fund some of those other projects that you have on the list, other items. Some are of more magnitude than others. But I think back, it was probably Bill Toot was the one who helped put that on the ballot, and Mayor Sterling's counsel way back in the day, before Tabor made real estate transfer taxes illegal, the Taxpayer Bill of Rights. So we're very fortunate to have these sort of funding sources that are set aside for affordable housing. Who would like to start?
Are we hearing from the public before?
Well, this is an action item. Let's have our comments first. It's really not a public hearing, but we can do that in just a moment. You know, we could take some very short public comment, if you have some designated speakers. We'll do it that way. That makes a lot of sense. Christine, thank you. But we're going to be on a little bit of a timeline. We have an executive session meeting after this. And I think, as a board, we're ready to move forward with something. Would anyone care to come forward and speak to the board?
Good evening, Mayor Richards and council members.
And just introduce yourself for the record.
Yeah, my name is Antonio Martinez. I'm a general manager for a restaurant here in town. And I'm also a resident of the Aspen Basalt Mobile Home Park in the past 20 years. I'm also a father of two beautiful kids, a two-year-old, a two-month-old. Like many of my neighbors, we work really, really hard to give them a better future, as much as we can. The mobile home park is just a place for us, is where we have written our story. This is our roots, is our, also our dignity of the leader that we have saved up and been able to accumulate over the years. And this is where families usually share their meals, they'll help each other, they help each other with giving rights to come into work to Aspen and on the way back. So we are very close to each other. We're almost like a family. It's one of the last places in the valley where working, like families like mine can actually afford to leave, and we'd like to keep it that way. The people in our park are the ones who help keep Aspen going. We believe that in our trailer park, we're around 75% of us work in Aspen currently. And we are the cooks, the servers, we are the childcare providers, we are the, the bank tellers, we're your construction workers, we're your landscapers, we're the ones that work early, the ones that we work late, we're the ones that we come in when it's dark night, and we're the ones that are leaving when it's already dark night again. And we're very, very proud of it, as much as everyone else in this valley. But our homes are at risk. Since the, since the land has been on, on sale, it's possible, like outsider investors, we still don't know who, who are they, or who they could be. And that's why we have come together as a community to try to buy the park itself with a, with the help of ROK and Thistle, and also with the help of our lawyer, Tom Snyder, who has been helping us for free in the past around two months. Also, the residents, we're trying to buy and manage our own community. And we're organizing learning and moving forward, but we need a more supportive use of our own for the absorb, quantity that they're asking for, which is, I think is 46. something million, which is absorbed. If you ask me a couple of years ago, the land was around eight million, and all of a sudden it jumped to over 20 million. They know that those people, they only see it as a profit, that they could be making money. But for us, that's all we have. And that's all we're going to get. And we don't get to save this space. We're going to have to get this place somewhere else, either in Colorado or outside of Colorado. So we're asking the City of Aspen to stand with us, to help us protect our community, to help us keep the people who work here living in Aspen. With your support, we can have a real chance to do something about it, and hopefully keep our homes for our future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You speak well for this issue.
Excellent.
Are there others who would like to make a brief comment?
Do we have one moment, and a translator for him?
Okay. Please, come on up and, again, give us your name for the record.
What?
Okay, you can translate. That'd be great. Thank you.
I'm so sorry, my English is...
That's okay.
My name is Miguel.
I come from the community of Aspen Basalt Mobile Home Park.
Get your microphone a little closer, too, so they can hear it on grassroots. Thank you.
I've always been raised with the ideology that humans are meant to stand for each other.
And a little bit about my story and the principles behind why I am backing up my community today.
I remember when this grand nation was in conflict with Iraq.
American soldiers went to my country.
To be trained.
For the War of Wars.
Something that the American soldiers were not familiar with.
And where I was a tenant or a supervisor.
Of the armed forces of my country.
And where we helped these soldiers.
So that they could be prepared to go to war.
To Iraq.
Where my country also sent soldiers.
To help this grand nation.
So that in this moment.
All of our citizens and all the people.
Can live in peace and harmony.
For problems and ideology.
And after I left the army.
I moved my family up to this grand city.
And this is how I got to this community.
Of Aspen Basalt Mobile Home Park.
Where it is a community.
Of families.
Hard-working people.
People who are very friendly.
People who I see every day.
That they wake up early.
To fight for their families and their jobs.
Just like you do.
That you wake up every day.
To fight for your families.
And to fight for your city.
That is part of us.
Of our community.
As I believe that there is a 70 to 80% of our community.
That work in the City of Aspen.
I currently work for the Colorado Mountain College.
I currently work for the Colorado Mountain College. With a person who was also a mayor like Mayor Richards.
Yeah, Steve Cadron.
All my community. We are fighting. Because we want to keep. Our housing. And for that reason. In the name of my family. In the name of my community. I am before you. To solicit. Everything possible. That you can help us with. So that we aren't afraid to lose our homes. Our ownership of our property. Because that will belong to our children. That is where we have seen our children and our grandchildren grow up. And it is a community. That has supported a lot. Has supported a lot the city of Aspen. Like I've mentioned, a lot of us work here. Thank you for your time and listening to me. And I insist. To keep working. Like you are working now. For this grand. For your citizens. Because this city. Where I didn't know it existed. But I even heard it in my country. That is, it's a place. Where the tourism comes to. Because it's a calm and Pacific state. A place where the city people are friendly. And that everybody collaborates. That's why I congratulate you and thank you. And I insist on that you continue your work that you do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you on behalf of council for your time and your sincerity. Okay, we'll have just a few more because this is, you can come up, but this is really not a public hearing. It's just an action item. But we understand you all have come here and we appreciate this, but we will get to a discussion about what we can offer.
Hello, my name is Robert Prossnitz, and I've been resident of the valley since 1972. My first 10, 12 years was up here at Aspen. I worked for only four people, five people. Aspen Ski Company, 34 years. Conor Amico Chevron, for 20 years on and off, and three years in sports shop. I would like to see us own our own property because every time we got a new landlord, they only lasted five or seven years. They did a little bit of work, but basically they were just cash cow-ing us. And I'd like to see us own our property. We have multi-generation families in the park. I am retired now on a very modest retirement, and I would like to stay where I'm at, which might be very hard if the rents go really up, and I have nowhere else to go. But it's important that we own and operate the park as a community, and I can't emphasize that enough. So any help that Aspen gives us would be most appreciated. Anyway, that's what I have to say, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for your time. All right, council members, would we like to have this discussion? John?
I'll just address the two questions. Yes, this seems like an obvious thing we need to do. It's happened before at other mobile home parks here in the valley, and it's development-neutral, and that's exactly what we should be doing. At what level? I would say match the county's contribution would be my suggestion.
Thank you. Christine, are you ready?
Yes, I have a few questions, actually. I'm interested in doing this and supporting. Diane, do you, you put up a list of all the other considerations that we should be thinking about in terms of housing. Do we know the total of all of those asks that are coming before us? Taking out the lumberyard, but some of the ones that are coming up before us in coming weeks.
The Habitat, I believe, is like a $2 million ask.
They asked for anything we could give, but two and a half, I think, was their total for materials to get started. Again, the Habitat, 88-unit apartment condo conversion was an opportunity to buy in to have some units that are designated for employees of either the city of Aspen or the Aspen community. I don't know what number you guys are thinking about of adding on to the Right Sizing Moving Assistance Program or similar programs, and we actually have not, as a board, decided which or to what level we're gonna move those forward. West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition, I think the council prior had donated $500,000.
Four...
Four hundred. Four hundred and fifty was added or...
Four hundred was the prior, and the current ask is a million.
Right, so that's four hundred from last year, a million from this year. The Forest Service property is a long way away from potentially being anything, and we have known that we would need other partners like Colorado Mountain College, the hospital, school district, county, and others to contribute before we could afford to really do anything there. And then I guess the deed restriction purchase program is for the potential of deed restrictions that would expire at some point in time.
That one is, is in the category of other tactics you might want to consider. Staff has considered bringing you a program similar to Vail Indeed, where you could purchase a free market, from free market current owners, a future deed restriction.
Okay, thank you. So I don't know that there's real totals. And Pete, what is the funding that we have at this time in the Affordable Housing Program?
Yeah, currently, there's about 130 to 140 million in the Housing Development Fund right now. A large chunk of that is already pre-planned for the lumberyard. Obviously, we're still gonna go out for a debt issuance, as is proposed anyway, to help cash flow that for a bit. That does not preclude the council from making some action on some of these other items. So I want to be clear that there is the ability to fit things into the Affordable Housing Fund.
Okay. That's helpful. I was just looking to give more context when we talk about how much we're looking at here.
I think that's important. Appreciate that. Comments, either Bill or Sam?
I, yes, I'm done with my questions. Yes.
Yeah, we'll come back around. We'll come back around.
Diane, I'm certainly empathetic to the situation and want to make sure that people have good housing situations. But what I'd like your insight on is what the downside risk is here. I want to look at, you know, what happens if, if this community or these communities are not able to convert to rocks? What are the risks? What are the sort of threats realistically based on current Colorado law? Could you talk a little bit about that so that we understand that if we're making this investment, it's a smart investment?
Sure. And I think I'm going to actually go a little, maybe slightly beyond your question because I think as a council, you may have, in addition to competing priorities, a couple of things to consider. The view and the discussion around what is the biggest risk is there's a belief that there's, there's little risk in redevelopment specifically because of Colorado state law requires relocation and/or purchase of a property if, if they want to redevelop. And just the barriers there and, Bill, some of the things you've talked to me about as far as the realistic redevelopment, that just the overall pro forma, what that looks like. The real risk is that the new owner comes in, there is a possibility it is a mobile home park owner. That is speculation at this point. We actually don't know who the owner is. Thistle has been working with an attorney in Denver. Is that they raise the rents. And that is one of the models that happens in these is new owner comes in, they raise the rents. Now, they can only raise them once in a year, according to Colorado state law, but they jack those up over a series of years. And it's not limited. They could come up and first year raise rents $1,000, for example. And then that people are then forced to move out. New mobile home park owner brings in a unit, charges a lot more for that unit, short-term rents it, et cetera, et cetera. Right? This is a more viable market for that. I think the other, frankly, the, the other thing the council needs to consider is that there are more than, slightly more than 50 mobile home parks between here and Rifle. And, you know, this is probably not the first one that's ever, this is going to happen to, so I think you do have to consider that. Thank you.
Thanks. Two sort of further things. One is just a comment. You brought up the term NOAA earlier. And, you know, the counterpoint to the risk of, of this threat of huge rent increases is that there is a limit to what people will pay for this type of housing. I don't know what, obviously, residents can afford and what they can't afford. That's everyone's individual situation, but there's certainly a limit. No one's gonna pay $5,000 a month for lot rent in a mobile home park, in my opinion. I think that's worth understanding and acknowledging. Second one is a question. Could you describe any existing deed restrictions that exist on these two properties?
There is currently a, on the Mountain Valley, oh gosh, Pete, do you remember what it is? There is some, it's, it's not formally a deed restriction. It's around, wow, my brain just went out.
For the use of the property? That it was not intended to be altered beyond the use of a mobile, as a mobile home park?
That's on the, right, correct. That's on the Mountain Valley one. But there is no restriction on the Aspen Basalt one.
So it's zoned, it's like zoned manufactured housing or something like that? This is not a deed restriction? Because I think in prior conversations, you've described it as a deed restriction.
It is, sorry, it is actually on a deed. You are correct. And I do have a slide that shows the zoning on these, if you'd like to see that.
No, I'm more interested in the deed restriction anyways.
And that is only on the Mountain Valley one.
Only because I think it's more protection.
It is.
Than zoning. So if I could summarize what I think you just said, and feel free to correct me if I'm misstating this, is that the real risk here is rent increases. There's not much of a risk of redevelopment. There's not much of a risk of this park becoming something else. We heard from one of the residents that there have been four or five landlords in his time living in this community, and yes, those have come with rent increases and some improvements, but that particular community remains a mobile home park. So, you know, my thoughts and opinions here are, if we're gonna contemplate this investment, we really need to be thinking about Diane's last point, which was, this is the first of many of these requests. You know, what are our geographical boundaries going to be if we do this? What makes sense? How do we, how do, we know how many people work and participate in the city of Aspen? Do we want this outside of the ABSS program or not? These are kind of big questions. Again, I'm not, I'm not opposed to this. I'm empathetic to the situation, but it brings up a lot of questions in my mind, and the biggest one being, is it really necessary? Is it really ultimately making a difference? Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. And I think it's important to bring up counterpoint of views and concerns like you have, and I think that that's really valuable. Sam, do you have comments?
I'll just ask the question of if we give something like 3 million today and they don't get the number that they're looking for, are we protected to get the 3 million back?
Yes.
Yeah. With that, I'm happy to move forward with the 3 million.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, for me, I am happy as well to move forward with a $3 million contribution. I think that that's very significant and can hopefully bring others to the table as well. My brother Bob lives in Maryland, where I am from originally, but he has bought a mobile home, modular home, it's actually a mobile home, down in Florida near Vera Beach, and it really is just a vacation home for them. They pay the space rent, they're happy with that, and they, but they only are there a few months a year. Florida gets a little too hot in the summer. And, you know, it's, it's something that I think we may not see people willing to pay 5,000 a month for rent in a mobile home park, but I think we are in danger of seeing it become a little bit more of a vacation rental toy or project for people as opposed to a community and a neighborhood. I would like to make sure that its team working on this is really looking at the potential tax benefits we can get to the owner. If, you know, I'm used to more land transactions and buying open space where, you know, you might say the value of a parcel was $10 million, but by donating 2 million and only accepting 8 million in cash, they get a $2 million write-off, and they end up with more money in their pocket at the end of the day than getting their full price and having to pay capital gains and taxes on the full amount. So I think that that's really important, that we look at all the angles possible to bring the price down. And the other is, I think it's really important to look at what value you're creating in actual home ownership. You know, when you put down that you own your home, you're able to get a lower credit card rate, that you have a better rating with the credit bureau. When you have something that you can perhaps get a second trust against when you need to help a child go to college. And, you know, it's just very different from the potential insecurity of a space rent situation. And so I think that this is a noble effort, and I fully support an allocation of $3 million towards this project and matching Pickens County.
And Mayor, just thanks to you and you mentioning to me about, about tax. I did, I did talk with Thistle about that, and while, while they said there aren't many except for a 1031 exchange, that that is a possibility, and they will keep that in mind and in the discussion, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I, I think, talk to some of the people who've worked with open space and trails like Dale Will, and see if there's, other than real estate transactions, just the flat-out donation of something of lower than its established price, might be able to find something there. I would accept a motion if someone is so brave to try to make one and see if we have concurrence. Or Christine, did you have any final comments now?
No, I, just one final thought is I'm, 3 million, I think, is a good match. We talk a lot about projects, the Yumbr Yard, which is a future development, and faces that we don't get to see. And I, this part of sitting at the council table and being able to hopefully help people with faces that you do see, I think is, is powerful. So thank you for all being here, and hopefully we can assist in some way.
John?
Yeah, I would add that I appreciate Diane's information about the other mobile home parks, but the amount of people that live in these two parks makes it apparent to me that we need to move forward with this. And this is in front of us right now. This is kind of a crisis right now, and I think it's important that we act on it. So I will propose approval of resolution, make a motion to approve Resolution 86.
With the amount of $3 million?
With the amount of $3 million contribution.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, it has been seconded by Sam, moved by John. Nicole, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
No.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes. Thank you very much. We have committed $3 million to the project. Diane Foster will continue to be our point person on these discussions moving forward, and we all wish you well and see where this can go. Thank you again for being here today. We now have an executive session to move into, and so our attorney will go over the specifics, but as usual, we do not come back to this room to end the executive session. We will move into the other chambers. We will not be able to take action during an executive session, but we will be having some discussions. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council staff is requesting an executive session pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute, Section 24-6-402, subsection 4, subsection E, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiations. negotiators, and 4F, personnel matters. The specific items of discussion involve instructions to negotiators regarding the city manager recruitment contract. This meeting will be recorded, and the recording of the executive session will be maintained by the clerk for not less than 90 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to go into executive session per our attorney's citation?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Nicole, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benidetti.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Mayor Richards.
Yes. Thank you very much. We will again turn off with grassroots TV. We are going into executive session. We will come out of executive session and close the meeting off camera, but we will not be taking any actions. We will be discussing potential direction. Thank you.